Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and enters the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of their choosing. And we don't have anyone signed in tonight for open forum. So we will move on to the subject of tonight's workshop, which is all centered on the budget, starting with our utility funds. Just a quick note, tonight we are in workshop format. Anything, this is a working session of council, anything that will be discussed tonight will be, is just for discussion and working purposes only. Anything that requires a vote will come before council at a future meeting for official action. And so with that, let's move into our workshop session. And Patrick?
Yes, good evening. Karen, can you get me up on the slides, please? And we'll go through a quick introduction and then Kevin and I will be tag teaming this little bit. Unplugged in. Okay, so here we are again. I believe this is our third discussion on budget. We plan to go forward. So we've already talked about general fund, basic general fund, and a preliminary look at the levy. We, at last point, last meeting after the council meeting, we talked about the capital improvement plan and the capital equipment plan. That was the council's first look at a 10-year and how these funds lay out for the next 10 years. Hopefully tonight, we will give you the rest of the funds, the major funds, and the 10-year impact on those and what those look like. We'll also give you a peek at what, if we follow all of those plans, what the debt, what the levy will look like for the next 10 years. And that's including any increases that we need for construction, for operations, for staff, anything. So you should be able to see a picture of that throughout. To the audience or to whoever who is, we're not asking you to adopt that tonight. We, this is a first look at a plan similar to the downtown plan. It's got a little bit more work to do. It's what we see right now for the next 10 years. And as we go through these 10-year plans, you have to understand that every year we will update these because things change on a year-to-year basis. So the priorities may change. And we'll go through some of that as we go on. In addition, for example, like the park fund, we currently have a study out there. We've, we've had some placeholders. It doesn't mean that's how it's going to lay out after the funds, but we'll get to that in a minute. So tonight, we will talk about the water fund, the sewer fund, surface water, park dedication fund, and like I said, the rest of the 10-year plan. So far, we've presented you with the tax levy proposal. We've shown you what the tax rate was. We've given you a general fund look and what we think's going to happen there and some of the outstanding issues that we have with union contracts still. Again, we've talked about the capital improvement fund and the capital equipment replacement fund. This is what we presented you as far as the tax levy summary right now. At first glance, that was at 7.52%. And our tax rate was at 35.6%. So that's what we're seeing so far. So tonight, as I was saying, we're going to give you the water fund and a 10-year forecast, the sewer fund and the 10-year forecast. We'll talk to you about the sewer, surface water, and the park dedication funds. And then, as I said earlier, we will talk to you about the 10-year look at the levy and what we anticipate there. We are trying to put together a financial plan. One of the reasons we do that is to provide not only you as the council, but the citizens of course, like a reasonable and responsible plan. You know, instead of going year-to-year, not understanding what we have to face, particularly in a growing community like we are, it's, we need to give you a better look. We need to develop and present and adopt an annual operating budget, which we all do every year, and develop and propose and recommend a long-term financial plan that addresses operations and capital needs. We have to do that with the knowledge that we try to keep our costs as low as we possibly can. That's our responsibility, that's our duty as council and as staff to, to present a reasonable budget, but still address the day-to-day needs of the community and keeping the infrastructure in good order while continuing to make the city a place where people want to live, work, and play, basically, and visit. All of this started with the strategic plan. Number one was the City of Lake, Forest Lake is obligated to operate in a financially prudent, responsible manner while maintaining the base of infrastructures and facilities for the community and to develop a sound financial plan and infrastructure, which is a major component impacting the quality of life and economic development. So, of course, we all know the major components of that are the general fund and the two capital plans, plus the utility funds and park dedication fund, and then what kind of debt service plan we have. Strategic Plan Two also has involved tonight, which is to provide a clear vision for the City of Forest Lakes, Parks, Trails, Recreation System and Facilities. Now, why I mentioned earlier, we still have a park plan underway, so we don't have the results of that, but we need a plan for the parks. We need to implement a system where we have standards for new development of those parks. And we need to find a, a long-term solution to park funding. Right now, we don't have a sustainable funding stream. Yes, we have, when we have development, we have impact, and I don't call them development fees, but we don't have a regular basis. Now, we've taken a little bit of action in the past few years. We did a, in this budget, we have a $50,000 coming out of the, out of the tax levy, but then we did that swap last year to, to give them a little boost. We can't do that swap all of the time. We can't continue to do that unless the council agrees. So we need to talk about how we're going to fund the parks once, you know, all development leaves and there's not those, those park dedication fees any longer. How are we going to pay for the maintenance and improvements of parks? And that's the only one that we haven't really dug into too much that you'll see once we get the plan from done, and then we will try to figure out what the needs are and try to put them in some kind of a reasonable order. So it's an organized and well-thought-out approach to avoid the remedy of kicking the can down the road. It's, you know, this is, this is the time where we say, okay, it's time to stop kicking the can, or at least maybe don't kick it as far. Obviously, everything's a balancing act, but when you kick the can down the road, as they say, nothing ever gets cheaper. There's nothing ever gets less expensive. Infrastructure only gets worse if you don't fix it. If it gets worse, it costs more to repair. Delaying needed work only makes the funding solution harder. If we kicked the can, it makes that million-dollar project, add it on to the next year's million-dollar project, add it next, so that you're $3 million behind. So you're trying to find a way. And then also, this plan should be able to prepare us for opportunities that come our way, such as grants, when the interest rates are low, when we can get monies from the state or federal government. We've been pretty successful with the state a little bit in the recent, and take advantage of any change of legislation on tax revenues or anything like that. So it's important to have that in place. So that's what we look at tonight. If you have any questions, there's a lot of information that's going to be here. Again, you may need some time to take a look at it and digest it. But if you, if you have any questions or concerns during the process or during it, please let us know, and we'll be happy to stop and answer you. So, questions at this point? If not, I'll unplug and give it to Kevin.
I just, well, Kevin's plugging in a quick logistics note and just ask of council. So tonight would be the last planned meeting unless we needed to schedule a separate meeting between now and Monday's council meeting. Monday's council meeting is expected to have an agenda item for the approval of the preliminary levy. And so tonight's working session is kind of our last chance and check-in to see all of those numbers, to ask questions, and then also to just make asks of staff of what's needed between now and Monday, of any holes that you might have, anything that you, analysis you haven't seen so far. Again, preliminary levy's not final. It's just our opportu, we just, you know, after, next week and after we pass that preliminary levy, we can't make any upward adjustments. And so this is kind of just our chance to do a completeness check of, is everything in that we would like to see in so far, knowing that we have some working sessions scheduled in October, November, and into December to refine and bring down if needed. But just kind of a, just a quick reminder on where we are in process. And we don't have a planned meeting between now and Monday. Always happy to schedule one if needed, but I think we've had some good working sessions so far, so we'll see where we end up tonight. With that, Kevin, ready?
Yes. All right. So as Patrick said, we're going to start with the utility funds and specifically the water fund. So this, like at our last meeting, I printed off some bigger sheets of paper for you to look at the plans, or the exact same ones that were in the packet for you as well. So no numbers or anything from there have changed. We're going at this fund by fund and pause at the end of each fund to answer any specific questions about that fund, just as long as we're talking about that as well. And then after we get through all the four funds, the three utility funds and the park dedication fund, we'll wrap it up with this, where that levy's looking at for the next 10 years and kind of go over those details as well. I just remind council what a 10-year plan is, that this anticipates the capital needs that each fund needs for the next 10 years. It's a good planning tool for the city. Along with these plans, it's important when you're identifying these needs to also have a planned funding source, whether that's a tax levy, user charges, grants, identifying some source to plan for that and adjust as necessary as time goes on to make those updates, as Patrick mentioned. Making sure, looking this, every budget cycle, make sure we're making the updates. This is a document that finance will always be looking at and updating even as, as things come up, two, three months, as things are coming up, just to make sure we're staying on top of how these plans should be looking. And then also, it's a thing that rating agencies like to look at. They like to see not only the current financial health of a city, but they also like to see not only that next year's budget, but what's the plan to fund some of the things the city has coming up in the future. So it is something that they, they do look at when providing the bond rating. So before we get into our water fund, there's a line item on the bottom of the three enterprise funds. Way at the bottom, you're going to see it's called target cash balance and then an over-under amount. When we're looking at how the enterprise funds, specifically water, sewer, and the surface water management fund are, we want a certain target cash balance, as we say. That ensures that we are paying for the operating expenses of each fund. So that is a number that we usually looked at. The next year's budget, we want the cash balance to be 50% of that operating expense line item. So for example, when you're looking at the water fund, since that's the first one, we look at the total expenditures line item and take 50% of that amount, say we want that amount of cash reserves at the end of, for example, 2022, to fund half of those expense. On top of that, we also want 100% of the planned capital purchases as well in that fund. That does exclude capital purchases that have a planned source outside of user charges, for example, bonds. If we're planning on issuing bonds for any water improvement projects, we take that capital out of that, that target cash balance because we don't need that cash there because we're going to issue bonds. For example, if we have $2 million in improvements and we're planning on issuing $2 million in bonds, that's the cash there. So we don't need that cash on hand and the end of next year carry forward into this year. So we take those out of the equation. On the flip side of that, when you're issuing bonds and you have your principal and interest payments that are due, you want to have 100% of those payments held in cash as well. So making sure that what the users are paying are sufficiently covering the operating expenses and those debt and those debt service payments and also those capital needs. What this helps tell the city and staff is if we see that line item going down negative, it could mean that this fund is, in essence, borrowing money from a separate fund throughout the year to help fund those operating expenses, debt service payments, even though you might see a positive cash balance at the end of the year. So it's a good number to look at and just understand what that is. And that's just taken to, that's looked at when we're looking at the 10-year plan for these enterprise funds and where we need, where the plan comes in for where those rates need to be. So with that, we will get into the water fund. So that's the first page of your document. That summarizes the revenues, the operating expenditures, things of that nature. And then the second page is going to be all the planned capital purchases. The first, the top part is all the improvement building side of the water fund, and then below is all the equipment vehicles. I mean, mostly focused on the first page as all that is rolled up into this page, and that just provides the details for where we're at. So the first thing to look at, of course, is when we look at the water fund, is what, what's the rate that's currently being charged in this fund? So for 2023, currently in our fee structure, there's a 3% increase in water utility rates on the books. When we took a look at the operating needs of this fund, to get a little, go a little bit backwards, we, we're looking at, what are the increases in this fund going to be? Wages and benefits are increasing at 3% each year. All those other expenditures that you see, you know, material supplies, repair, maintenance, professional services, we're anticipating those are going to go up 2% each year. So when you're looking at what the rates are and just trying to cover those expenditures, 3% is, is covering those, just the operating side of those increases. So when we're planning out this, the schedule, the main, the main number I look at is down at the bottom, that cash balance. You want that cash balance to, of course, be positive. You don't want anything in your plan to come down to, to have a negative planned balance in that fund. You want to look at the target cash balance. You are going to see a lot of red there and negative there. That's, again, that's an important under, number to consider, but you also need to consider what's the best, what's the best plan for this city? You, you can see going down all the way, even though it's eight, 10 years down the road, and by the time 2031 comes around, it does look like we're coming to be positive again. And we're also looking at what's, what's the big plan going forward. We don't want big, just like the tax levy, big increases, big decreases, just looking at that consistent number. So at the first bullet point, you can see we had approved 3% increase. This plan is incorporating a 6% increase starting in 2023 for the next 10 years. With that, where I, where that number got, is being proposed at, when you look at 2027, the cash balance is projected to get very low at about $143,000. If we change that rate increase, that cash balance will be going negative in three to four years. That's where it's projected. And that's where it's also important, where things change, things come up, is the 6% needed, is there some fluctuation in that? But that's not that far down the road when we're looking at 2023 here. That's, that's pretty close here. So that's where, even though you're seeing some negatives in that negative cash, that's where the 6% came at to make sure that we're maintaining that positive cash balance. So the planned funding for this fund, for capital, it's all with cash reserves except for bonds planning to be issued in 2025, which is for the public works facility. Again, as we, as mentioned in the last meeting, depending on the needs of that facility and what years those actually fall in, that could change, but that is slotted in there to be issuing bonds to help cover the portion allocated, the water, as that facility would help, how was vehicles, equipment that are dedicated and needed for maintaining the water operations of the city. Bonds are also planned to be issued in 2030. I will reference page two on there where there are some pretty big planned expenditures down the road as a new water storage for $5 million in 2030, as long as $10 million and $4 million for a new water treatment plant and two wells. Those are out there. I know Dave can answer more specific questions on the needs of those or timing. Some of that is based on development and needs of the city, but those are some big expenditures that will be needed at some point in the city. So to help cover those improvements, bonds are planned to fund those projects. The other item to note here on the water fund lastly is in the 2022 estimate, there's an intergovernmental line item for about $2.2 million, almost $2.3 million. The city received those funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. Half of that was last year in 2021, and the city received the second half of that in July of this year. Those are funds that the city, with all the response with COVID, received, and there's been a big emphasis on spending those with maintaining water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. So the city did some analyze, what's the best use of these funds, as there are some other opportunities for this fund, to use these funds, but based on the current condition of this, of the water fund and the needs of the infrastructure currently that this fund has, the staff feels like this is the best use of that money to help, to help this fund out. Just to put that into perspective, when you're looking at the cash balance, take about $2.3 million out of that cash balance all years, and that goes away entirely there. So this plan is built with the thought that this fund will receive all those funds and would go to that water infrastructure. Lot of information there, but that's, that summarizes what I wanted to talk about with the water fund, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council, questions on the water fund? I have a couple, just want to, I just want to make sure I'm tracking. So the plan as presented assumes a 6% rate increase every year? Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And then also is assuming bonding in 2025 and 2020, or 2030?
Correct, yes.
And on the expense side of the projections, we're, we're expecting 3% increases in wages and benefits, 2% increases in other expenses. I just have a pause over that number, given what's recently released around inflation, and hopefully that is a temporary blip, but we don't know. What, what's our, what's our mechanism? I guess what is, how does the plan, how do we, I guess maybe the question is, I'm concerned maybe we haven't inflation-proofed this enough. And is there, I guess maybe my question is confidence level, I guess, of, is, is the alter, if, if inflation were to come in higher and expenses were higher, project expenses higher, is, are we simply, are we either bonding for more? Is it asking for a larger rate increase? I don't know. What, what was the, the thought process that kind of set those current rates?
Yeah, I think the-
I think there's a question there somewhere. I just have concerns over modest growth, right?
I think you hit it right on the head there. There's, there's a lot of unknown here. So when we look, when we talk about these 10-year plans, it's like we said, it's very important to look at these every year, minimum. This is something, based on my prior history, I was in these more than about once or two months a year. People would come to me with updated information. We'd update this on the fly so we knew and could anticipate more than when come budget time, what, what we're seeing here. And your point is very valid with those increases as well. And that's where the 6% is the plan. We might have to come this year and say inflation hit us really hard, we're going to have to ask for something higher than that. Or it could come back down and say, you know what, instead of a 6% increase, we could get away with doing a 5% increase. And it could be something where we might need to come by, come by for 2024 and say, we need, you know, a 10%, a 15% increase just to get us caught back up. And that's where we're taking that into consideration, where the council had already approved a 3% increase for this fund, trying to offset some of that, saying we don't feel 3% sufficient for that, and we want to build in a 6% to get to that, to that level, where if we stayed at that 3%, we would be, have to be asking for more in the future years. So trying to, trying to balance that out of the unknown with trying to make sure we're planning for the future, but also making sure we're, we're feeling where we're getting to the best rate for the city and the citizens that are paying this as well. We don't want to over, like I said, we don't want to jump that to 12% to next year have a zero, then have to, you know, so that's where we're really trying to level that out. And will that change? Sure. It could be a 7% down to five, but at least having some of that increase, and hopefully we see some of that start to level out where it can come down. But as we all know, that doesn't look like that's going to be the case in the near future.
I, I know the last time we did the rate study, you know, we did have to make a pretty major adjustment at that point in time, which, you know, I, I appreciate sort of that anticipated slow and steady approach, right? So that we have a, we're not, we're not seeing these major jumps from one year to the next. Is it time for another rate study?
So when we look at the rate studies, so that one was done in 2018. And when you look at the rates, this, this pretty much follows their, the rate study. It does give, there is some, some benefit to having outside source come in and look at that. This provides more, I guess, this outside opinion on it for how that looks. But I do have, based on my prior history, I have looked at these rates before. This is how those rates flow. It's based on assumptions of where you feel your operating expense is going to go, what are your capital needs, and what does that do to cash balance? So it is an avenue the city can definitely look at. At this point, I would say for the rates for 2023, we'd probably be a little bit behind baseball, trying to get something out with that, but it could be something that we look at doing next year, spring, summer for 2024. That's the direction the council would like to go.
Yeah, and if you look at the last rate study, it looks just like this. This is, this is what they did. This is actually probably a little more finite than the rate study because it goes out further and it takes a bigger and better look at the capital needs. And, and so I think this is, this is a good, you could call this a study on its own. It's a good, it's a good piece of work.
Yeah, and, and this feels fairly solid to me, but to Mayor Bain's point, I don't know what, you know, the impact of those inflationary pieces are, are going to be. And I don't know if there would be some insight, you know, we, we, we would gain as a result of that, you know, that rate study as well.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the, the people who do rate studies have even a better crystal ball than we do at this point. And I think the, the importance of this, and this is what you all have to remember every year, is you need to, you need to, we need to give this to you every year and update it out, the next year will be 33, and we will know what's happened in the last six to seven months, or at least the first six to seven months of the first year, and make those adjustments so that if all of a sudden one of the plants go down and it meets a need to rehab and we have to figure out how to slot that in, we will. Or that the price of steel's gone up because you can't get it from China anymore, or whatever the case may be. But we should know that ourselves, and we rely on not only Dave to look at it, but, but Kevin and, and looking at the bills and looking at the performance of the fund and the performance of individual line items to judge whether we're on track or not.
Other questions? No, I appreciate the degree of confidence.
I don't know if this is a number you have in your back pocket. So, so utilizing the city's full 2.2, almost $2.3 million for the American Relief Act to this water fund, I agree with staff's recommendation that this goes to the water fund. Do we know what rate, but I also recognize that that's a $2 million infusion immediately into the fund? Do we know what rate would, needed to be charged if we did not have that one-time infusion?
About 15%.
Oof. So we would be looking, so we would be looking at a 15% increase?
Yeah, plus you'd have to bond. What this does is we don't have to bond so soon. Remember, if we remember when we talked about all the increases in the bids for the water treatment plan or for the wells, and then we were planning on bonding? This relieves you of bonding this first year. So that's, you know, it saves you in debt service, it saves on bonding costs, and that's why your rate is lower, it doesn't go to your 15%.
Is that a one-year 15, one-time 15-year or multiple, or 15%?
I could get that exact number to you, but my recollection, recollection is it'd probably be about a 15% each year because you're looking at making up $2.3 million. Or like Patrick said, it would be some cross between maybe a lower percent, then we're bonding. It's a lot of factors that go into that, but I would say a safe figure, a minimum of a 10% to 15% somewhere in there. And if that's the number you want, I can, I could send you an updated schedule with that, with that number out on how that would look, if you would like to see that.
It'd be helpful to know. I know we, we just get questions around what, you know, what is council doing with American Relief Act funding? And it'd just be helpful to know that, you know, this is, that is where those funds are planned to go.
And here is the direct benefit to any users of the, of the fund. So the, the plan as is, does have a fund in red in 2024. Near-term reaction to that, like what, what, what is, is that a temporary that, because, you know, if you look further out, the fund is back to cash flowing. Is, so do we let it ride for a few months? Or what does that, what does that look like as, as we react? I'm just, it's a year away, and so just what is the plan for that?
So the fund doesn't go in the cash balance negative. We're just, well, not just, we're negative when we're looking at our target cash balance. And that's where, but it's a good number to have in mind with where you're striving to get to as a city to keep in mind. But also trying to keep in mind, for example, when you're looking at 24, 25, you know, 26, 27, to make up those amount of dollars and looking at what the rate increase is would be another very high percentage. So I think this really points out the need that this water fund has and where we need that commitment for where these rates need to be. And just like what I said before, we could go a different route and look at doing a big spike increase or plan higher projected rates. But there also are some unknowns with that, where looking at just trying to even that out for what we're looking at for a levy, what we're looking at for utility rate increases as we haven't gotten a sewer and surface water yet. What, what's a good, what's a good number there to start out with? And that's where we came up with the six percent.
Understood. Any other questions related to the water fund? We've known this was going to be the challenging one, so appreciate the level of detail here. When would you expect to be asking council to approve the 2023 rate?
That'll be when you pass the budget in December, we will give you the, the fee schedule. And that's where we traditionally have put the water sewer, all the rates go in there.
All right, I think we're ready for the sewer fund.
All right. So sewer fund, we just go on to page three of your printout. Same thing with wages and operating expenses here. We assumed a three percent increase in wages and benefits and then two percent increase in all other expenditures. The sewer fund does have already a 2020 approved rate increase of six percent, so we kept that in there as well. The other part with this is that the sewer fund is also projected then, starting in 2024, through the term of this plan to have a five percent rate increase in there as well. The sewer fund, as far as bonding goes, it goes back to the planned public works facility and the timing of that, that there would be bonds being paid for out of this sewer fund as well, being in 26, 2026 and 2027. So those are planned expenditures in this fund with part of those bonds being issued for that facility to be paid out of the sewer fund and sewer user charges. So not to look at this fund, we're looking at the cash balance yet again. And you can see that there is some red again on that target over-under, but not as significant as a water fund. So this fund is in a lot better shape. Even though we're still having that five percent increase, six percent next year, five percent annually, that does keep this fund in pretty good shape, whereas honestly is able to pay for those capital improvement funds while, besides that large expense of the public works facility. So this fund is, is relatively healthy. Again, taking the approach that we want to pay for, want to have cash on hand to pay for as most things as possible when those expenditures come up. So there again, if it's something where we're looking at, we would be, feel more comfortable bonding, we could, that target cash balance would go down. The rates may or may not get switched up with that depending on, even though we're not getting cash on hand, that would add, again, principal and interest payments that would be required out of this fund. So taking all those into consideration, again, just like the water fund and trying to keep the big increases and decreases off, offline and kind of off-record is keeping that consistent five percent increase each year is where this fund seemed to fall in and have a good, good outlook when you look at the next 10 years. Again, looking at where, what the actual results are and where things come up as far as inflation goes, other planned expenditures and things like that that come up.
Council, any questions that we have on the sewer fund? Feedback, points of feedback? After the water fund, I don't have anything in particular more. This looks to be a good plan, and we've known that this fund was in, in strong, a stronger position. Just maybe worth noting, the intergovernmental funds that are in the 2022, those are the state, are those the state bond proceeds?
Yes, those are state, those are funds that came from the state that the city received, correct?
So just another kind of note of impact for what, you know, our, our use of those intergovernmental funds and being successful in pursuing those bond proceeds has really helped. Because, yeah, so six percent increase is sizable, but without that, it would have been a much, a much different situation, which is why we pursued the funds to begin with. But it's just nice to see the financial impact of that.
Correct, and those are considered when we look at these funds and rates. It's just really hard to pencil those ins as a planned source when there's so much unknown out there as far as one, if they're going to be available in three, four, or five years. And two, even if they are, are you going to get them? So that's where they're very, very hard to plan for, and that's where a plan comes on the road. If you're successful in obtaining some of those amounts, then maybe you don't have to bond. You don't have to bond for as much, and then that's where you relook at the fund and look at the rates and what that possibly changes in your debt service requirements. So it is a good, it's definitely something the city always looks at. Is this something that has not been built into this plan unless we're for sure knowing that we've secured those funds?
All right. I think we can move on to surface water.
Okay. Nothing new here with the wages and expenses, same three percent and two percent as we look at what the plan increase in those are. Currently, there are no approved 2023 rates for the surface water management fund. So when we look at this fund as well, we're looking at that six percent increase being proposed, starting in 2023 for each year throughout the plan. That does give the storm, the surface water fund a good cash balance to pay for. You do see, again, that target balance going negative, but it does, it's a pretty consistent amount of something where we are being able to fund the capital needs in this fund. The one thing to note here is, if you remember back to when we presented a council meeting on Monday, we did shuffle some surface water fund improvements into the street improvement, improvement fund. As this fund, when we had those expenditures in here and then tried to pay for those, really put this fund in a very, I guess, dire situation. So that's where the determination was that we would move those surface water costs related to projects, street improvements into that street utility fund. So that six percent increase is being built into this plan with the ready, taking those out without having to increase the rates even further, help cover those, those costs. There are some opportunities for some intergovernmental grants here, specifically for the street sweeper. We feel confident that we would probably be able to secure those funds, talking with Dave. But again, that's three years out, we don't know what the funding's going to look like. So that's being taken out here as well. And then really, when you look at the target cash balance, if we ended up securing, for example, 400,000 in funds in 2026 to help cover costs at street sweeper, that gets our target cash balance out of the red and into a good, to a good dollar amount as we would have a revenue source besides cash reserves there. So taking all that into consideration, looking at the possibility of that with this fund and looking at where that cash balance needs to be on the six percent, again, seemed like a good number to be with this surface water management fund.
Questions on surface water management? Two things come to mind. One, I believe that this is where we're funding our insured expenses with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District as well as the Lake Association, is that right?
That's correct.
And where are, where, what line are those reporting in? Is that in the project section, or do we also have some operating expenditures that are?
It's probably in other services and charges, I would bet, I would guess.
Okay. All right, and then-
It's in professional services in the operating budget, the money that's dedicated to be spent with the watershed and the lake association.
Perfect, okay. And then this is an area where we, it's the, I think, the least understood fund, and it's the area where we, because we separately bill as a surface water management fee on the utility bill, and it's sent citywide, even those who don't have other city utilities, it just gets highlighted as, it's a point of aggravation for many. It'd be helpful to see at some point a comparison of our fees compared to our benchmark communities. It'd be helpful to see that between now and year end, just to make sure that we are staying in line. Last time I think we looked at this, it was, we were on the very low end of some of our benchmark communities. And I think it's an area where as we continue to have pressure of we need to do more for our lakes, do more for clean water, I think it's an area where we have some potential for some upward movement if we needed to do some of those projects. But again, it has to come with some public awareness of where we are compared to other communities. So having that in our back pockets, I think, would be helpful. I'm not aware of like a specific ask that says we should do something specifically for 2023, but those projects are always percolating, so it'd be good to just have that information.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the public doesn't, the public does not understand this. You know, case in point, I don't, I don't have city water, I have a sewer, you know what I mean? Within a conversation around this, you know, the surface water management fee that was charged. So I think this is a great opportunity for education and awareness as well. As, and I also support Mayor Bain's kind of compare and contrast plan as well.
Dave, you look like you have something to say?
That comparison is on the city's website. So on the stormwater webpage, where it has stormwater fees, it gives a whole spiel on why we charge that fee. And right on the bottom is a breakdown of all the cities in the metro that charge that and where we are.
Oh, fabulous, good.
And that gets updated every year. So every year, once we get the new results, it's usually in March, April, then we update that, that bar graph. So it's always on there.
Perfect. But do we have a mechanism to push that out versus expecting somebody to come to us too? I, I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility. I know a lot of our billing is online, we're not doing a lot of mailing anymore. Maybe social media, I don't know. But there, there may be some opportunities for, for pushing that kind of communication out.
I think certainly some information, especially around the time of that annual bill. I forget which cycle that, that annual charge goes on, but right around that time is when it tends to percolate, so.
The annual bill just went out the last quarter, so we won't be doing it for another year.
Maybe still an opportunity to get some information out there.
We'll figure something out.
Any other questions related to surface water management? All right, park dedication fund.
I will take this one. I mentioned earlier about the park dedication fund. There is no target cash balance in this fund yet. This will depend solely and a lot on where the park master plan comes in and how it comes in. As you see here, right now, the cash balances are good. One of the reasons that is, is because as internally as staff and our development team talked about this and Belts Park renovation, while it's going, getting ready to start, we have to spread it over three years in order to keep this fund stable. If we don't, if we condense it to two years, we'll go into the red. So we just have to make that decision to do that. Doesn't mean the park's not going to get done, it just means it has to be phased a little bit differently. That's important because, you know, this is a, a pretty expensive project for the park funds. If, if they were spending it all at one year, you, you would see a lot of bread on the sheet. This takes into consideration incoming revenues, you know, dedication fees and to try to keep this balanced. Some of the other things you see as far as the capital plan, those are just placeholders like Southview and Summerfield, and those probably will change. We just wanted to make sure we started to identify some of those. Depending on the plan, we'll see how those all line up. This will look a lot different next year as far as the capital needs versus the income. Again, the, the, we, in 23, we, we have a $300,000 line item from intergovernmental because we got a grant from the DNR for, for Belts Park, so that's good. We do plan on being aggressive to continue to look for grants to, to improve parks. Park dedication fees are, are stable at 75,000. We just don't know where that's going to go yet. We don't, I mean, the nice part about this fund is if we, let's say we got $500,000. Well, this is a really a, a project-based fund, so it's a one-time revenue for one-time expenses. So you don't have to worry too much about operating in here. So that's why we're not too worried about, you know, trying to look and see what those park dedication funds are going to be. Because honestly, we will never, ever be able to figure that out, depending on what developments come in. Again, I'll have to point out that we did in 22, give a $450,000 influx into this fund to, to help it along. And if you remember, just a few years ago, we had the general fund relieve the loan that the park fund had, so we also gave that the other cash infusion to get this fund on the way. So those two items alone have been able for us to stabilize this fund a bit. And we are dedicating at least $50,000 over the next 10 years, every year, and the tax base. That may have to change. Again, we have to begin to look at a sustainable funding to do park projects and major park renovations. We have a lot on the table that, that should be coming up. Fenway Athletic expansion, park renovations, playground equipment, things like that. So right now, this, this looks good, the cash balance is good, but we'll, we'll have a better look at this next year. This is the, one of those, like, kind of like downtown plan, we just don't know yet exactly where this is going. That's why we have the plan. So if there's questions on this, I'll, I'll answer them, but I think we're in good shape for this year.
I think just being to this point and having a 10-year picture is helpful. And it's, it's just refreshing to see that you can now start to see when this, when projects are going to get slotted. This has been a, like a lot of our 10-year plan, an area of unknown and murkiness, kind of looking out into the future. So it's good to at least have numbers on a page that line up to. We all wish some of these funds had larger balances, but now we at least know what the plan is for kind of getting some of these projects done.
Yeah, and I think the city council's done what they can in the past with the relieving of that loan and the $450,000 to, to help this fund along. But again, it's just a matter of future planning for this fund.
But I, on the other hand, I do, even though it's, you know, we're dropping from 450 to 50, I appreciate, I appreciate the dedication to doing something when for a very long time, we did nothing. We just, you know, we just relied on park dedication fees to get the work done. So, you know, I think, I, I think our, our strategic plan says, sends that message to us that our community wants us to make a commitment to our parks, trails and lakes. And so, you know, I hope, I hope to see some additional dollars infused, whether it's grants or whatever it is. But I do appreciate the commitment.
Any other questions, thoughts on park dedication? All right.
All right, so back to, now we'll shift gears a little bit, and then we'll get back to looking at our property tax levy and where we see that going in the next 10 years. So we're start, I broke this out into two separate sections. The top part where you can see are the current tax levies. Those are the ones that are currently at the city, whether it be general fund, capital funds, and the debt service that the city already has. funds, and the debt service that the city already has. Then the one below is proposed bond issuances. Those are the ones where we went over within the plan, identified where we feel like we're going to be issuing bonds, and then projecting out what that principal and interest is going to be, and hence what that levy would be needing to cover those payments. So when we start, we're looking at the general fund. So going forward from 2023 to 2024 and beyond, we're assuming a 5% increase each year. This is to cover our wage increases, benefit increases, as well as any operating increases as well. When we look at where we're at with our current union contracts, where those are going, where benefits are going, as well as all other operating expenditures, 5%, again, is a good, we feel like it's a good number just to cover those increases there. What's also built into that increase, if you flip to the next page, there is a list of proposed, of new proposed positions, and they filtered out by departments with an estimated cost on what that would look like. So for example, in 2024, you see we're looking at a possible two-part-time community service officers. So that 67,500 has also been added into that 2024 proposed levy increase on top of that 5% increase to cover that, because that would be, those would be positions strictly funded out of the general fund, and the funding source would be that property tax levy.
Just let me interject here with this chart. The department heads were asked what they believed their needs were to, for the next 10 years as far as positions go. They're reflected here. They may not be exactly in the order that they wish them to be, but they're in an order that we believe we can afford to do, or at least can add. One of the reasons we put community service officers up front in this is because with the trouble we're having getting police officers, maybe we can relieve some of that, those duties with civilian officers that may be easier to get. And you'll see we've added patrol officers in this, and park people, and public works. And all of this is also dependent on growth and how fast we grow or what our needs are. So again, the importance of reviewing this every year to see if these are the right positions to begin with, or if we need a different position, or if they are slotted in the right year, that's the review that'll happen annually. So while we were saying we need, for example, a street maintenance worker out in 32, maybe that's going to have to move up to 25, or who knows? It just depends on how fast and what grows. So we are not telling you we're going to hire every one of these, but we need to, we're, just like the dollar amounts in the capital plans, this is also capital, but this happens to be people capital, and we need to identify those. And I think this is at least a reasonable, rational list. But again, I can't predict what's going to happen in five years and what may changes, or what may, we may, priorities change that the council may have, or anybody has, or the community has that will require a change here. So it's just an outlook, but it's built into the 10-year levy projections.
This is so helpful.
Yeah.
This is a gift for the next council.
I mean, it's.
If they all follow it, it would be great.
It's difficult to reach your destination without a roadmap.
Yeah.
So, you know, and whether or not it follows this cadence, or, you know, lands, I mean, there may be a change five years from now, you know, at least this kind of gives us that map.
Just like the capital improvement plan, this is, are these positions in today's dollars? Is that what the assumption is?
They have been adjusted, I think, 3% a year. So they're, I believe they continue to increase. Yes, if you look, for example, the patrol officer goes from 100 to 105 to 110 to 115. So there's been adjustments there.
Okay.
I guess any other specific questions on the general fund before I continue on to the other ones? I know the general fund makes up a big portion of that tax levy, so I, I mean, it's the one that's operate the city. So if there's any questions on that, can answer that, otherwise I'll move on.
I think we're ready for what's next.
Okay. So the next one lists is the park dedication fund. This is the one we just went over. That's projecting right now just to have a $50,000 tax levy in that fund until we know more, and where that master plan comes in, the direction where we get to, what type of projects are out there, and the planned funding for those. So without knowing that, it was hard to build in any sort of increase right now with that for how that would look. On the next fund, the capital improvement fund, that fund was presented at the council meeting on the 12th, and that for, looking at, currently has a $200,000 levy. We're proposing, based on how that fund's going to look, that that $200,000 levy is going to be sufficient to cover those needs in that fund. So as presented, that's the levy going into the improvement fund. The capital equipment fund, again, this follows that capital improvement plan where that enabled to be able to pay for cash for all equipment needs that the city anticipates having, except with the, with the exception of major fire truck purchases. This levy will help support being able to purchase all the equipment needed by the city. Plow trucks, which are getting quite expensive, up over $300,000. Fire also has some other, not engines, but trucks that cost upwards of $300,000, $400,000. This levy is built to support those major purchases, with the exception of those fire engines, which the city will be good for 20 years, till we need to consider looking at those. The EDA fund is an ongoing levy as well, based on the current needs of that fund. $150,000 is sufficient to be built into there. But as we mentioned before, how are we going to fund the downtown redevelopment? Is that going to be EDA, and how that's going to look? So that is something that will affect that levy, but until we know anything for certain on how that's going to look, the $150,000 will support those operations in the EDA. The next three are the current debt levies, bond issues that the city has issued. Those levies follow what is in the bond documents when those debts are issued. These funds are looked at, too, this to see where they're at, if those levies can't be adjusted some, this to make sure we have sufficient balance in it or make those payments, but also seeing if they can be fluctuated, where we're not having too much cash there. So those levies are following those bond issuance documents, but can be fluctuate very minimal, if any. And then the whole section below under proposed bond issuances. Those, based on all the plans, excluding the bonds that are being proposed for the water and sewer fund, these are the bonds that, improvements that are going to be funded through bonds. So these bonds were projected to be 20-year bonds at a 3.5% interest rate, based on working with our consultants at LRS, what they feel a good interest rate is for that. That is a wild card in this. You could be higher, you could be lower. I like to look at it as you need to bond when improvements need to be made. Otherwise, you're kicking the can down the road. The infrastructure just keeps getting worse. And I look at it like a house mortgage rate. You might buy a house now at a higher interest rate, but there are opportunities for us just to refund and refinance those bonds as well to lower interest rates. So when you take that into consideration, you have some that might be higher, you might have some rates that are lower, that 3.5% is a very good planning interest rate to use when we're looking at, looking at how we're going to project these out. So those amounts are going to fluctuate based on if there's, the costs that come down the road, if the interest rate's higher or lower, but it at least provides a plan in there that if we're going, sticking to this plan, we're going to plan on issuing bonds, here's at least some dollar amount tied to what those levies are going to look like. Any questions on that?
Any questions so far? I don't think so. So this is council's first look at this document, and so we are all soaking it in, and this will be a point for many future conversations, I'm sure. But it's, this is our first look at, of the 10-year, of the projects proposed in the 10-year plan, what are the sources of, the planned sources of funding? A, what are the projects? B, what are the sources of those funds, either a general fund tax levy or some bond issuance? And those are kind of the three components going forward of, do we do the project, and do we have the expense? And if we do, how are we paying for it? And seeing this all put together, you know, over a 10-year plan is just really helpful. I think in the future, we're going to wonder how did we make decisions without having this document in front of us? So just kudos to staff for getting us to this point. The 2031 levy looks really nice. I'll say that.
Yes.
I was actually paying attention to 26, 27.
That increases mostly for the public works facility, so that, again, is an item that's needed, and where that falls in, it's going to fall in somewhere.
Yeah.
But that's causing a big increase in those two years.
I noted that, and I agree that it's necessary.
And it's, and the schedule, again, is fluctuating to change. When that public works facility gets done, it's not going to get done in one year. So right now, the plan is to issue half in one year and half the next. And it all comes down to working with our consultants. Is it better just to bond for it all at once? Or, for example, are we able to stay under that $10 million threshold and bond two times, but they are having double the issuance cost? So there's just a lot of factors when it comes into this. But again, this is getting, this paints a real good picture for how, for where the city is going to be going in the next three, five, 10 years. Lastly, if there's no more questions on that, I just wanted to touch base again on the tax rate. That was presented earlier as well for what that is, but this to bring it back to council's attention. There is a slide. It does show where that tax rate has been for the city since 2013, and you can see that has been, especially over the past four to five years, right around 40%. With the values going up, estimated at about 27%, that tax rate is going down to about 35.6% as it sits right now with the levy that's being proposed for 2023.
And the actual levy percentage increase that we proposed, at the beginning of the, the first date was a 7.52%. As you see, Kevin, it's already starting with new numbers. It's at 7.44%. So a little bit less, for at least what we believe will be the number that you will adopt on Monday upcoming. And we'll continue to get new information as we get closer to December.
Fabulous.
And I guess I, I know we have a couple of contracts that aren't settled.
Correct.
How have we, how have we factored that in here?
We have factored it in.
Okay. We're making some assumptions.
We are making some assumptions.
Okay. All right.
I guess as we, maybe we're kind of pivoting between both kind of 10-year plan and the immediate conversation around passing the proposed levy on Monday. Maybe before we talk further about kind of just where we're landing on the proposed levy for 2023, maybe let's kind of just kind of revisit back to the full 10-year plan. Any questions at council? Any further questions that council has, either on the 10-year plan, on what's included, what's excluded, additional detail we would like, you'd like to see? You know, this is a working document that's going to continue to be updated, but I think, you know, it's, personally, I'm at a point of just kind of soaking it all in. I'm sure I'll think of many questions as we proceed here, but anything that's glaring or comes to attention?
It's very helpful. Thank you for printing it on large paper, too.
It's hard to see, otherwise it gets too long.
Yeah, for sure. So we do a lot of expense planning, and on the revenue side, I mean, we, revenue is kind of guided based on kind of projected property values. Is it possible, or do we have any data on kind of projecting out what tax rate might be as we're, you know, if this is our planned levy rate? Are there any kind of go-forward estimates as to what that might mean from a tax rate perspective? Is it possible to show, you know, kind of how we're?
If you mean for 10 years?
Yeah.
I assume we.
Is there three years, five years? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the only difficult part is the assessment, the assessment part of it, obviously. But what we could do is assume a certain assessment percentage, and then use the numbers that we've given you tonight and see what that tax rate might look like. I don't know if we would use the 26% that they've used this, that happened this year. But, you know, there's got to be a number there that we can, or give you two scenarios, one at, you know, 10%, one at 20%. We can take a look and see if we can figure that out, and then what that might do to a tax rate.
Are the numbers so wild right now, it's?
The numbers are insane right now.
I hesitate, if it really is a period, if there's not some sort of guiding factor, guiding, guiding, guidance, I mean, it's kind of like asking about future inflation. Who knows, right?
Yeah, it's all market-driven, really. So we could have, you know, assessments go back down. I mean, we had that in, what, 2008 or '09 here, I think, or so forth. So, you know, you just never know which way it's going to go.
I guess my personal perspective is while the information would be nice, if it really is a high degree of estimation that doesn't have a great confidence level, it probably creates more noise and confusion. I don't want someone to look at an estimated number and think that it's more.
We'll run something and see if we're comfortable with it, but yeah, it's, I just.
Maybe the answer's no, just even watching this worm back here.
Again, it's really not so much our expenses and our revenues, because our revenues are pretty stable and stagnant, because there's not a lot of diversity in our revenue streams. And our expenses are pretty stable for the most part, except for some of the capitals. But now, if we get this all in place, it makes it even more stable. But assessing and market forces, who knows?
Yeah.
We didn't expect 26%. I mean, that's, I mean, you saw that when you had your review session with the assessor and the public. It's just.
Because the part that we, well, it's outside, the part that we just don't forecast is significant changes in tax base, right?
Correct.
And maybe that's just a known unknown, that we just don't include it in the model.
And you don't know how much development's going to come in, and when it's going to come in, if it's going to be commercial development, if it's going to be residential development. I mean, it's, in a community like this, that's not grown out, it makes it even more difficult.
And maybe the conversation point is that development sequence and that tax base growth plan just changes the planned, potentials, planned sequencing on some of those later-stage projects that if growth is there, you might do them earlier. If growth's not there, maybe you push them back.
Correct. And that's why it's so important, and I'll repeat it again, to go over this every single year. Add that next year on at the end, and let your staffs go through it and see if there's any anticipated changes, or market changes, or development changes that will might change this picture.
Can we, can we simplify this step-two chart for our meeting?
Which one?
Yeah, the, well, the impact, the actual tax impact on our residents.
Yeah, I could.
Oh, okay.
I actually have that simplified version down.
Okay.
When I was comparing it myself, just to get it to line up, like, here's a value in 21, here's a, and just get it there, and it's kind of all in one line, so you can see that. Yeah, I have, I can send that out, too, so you can even see that.
I think it would be a good idea to visit that on Monday as well.
We will have it for you on Monday.
Making some final decisions.
Agreed.
So there is a good, maybe a good jumping off point. Is there anything further you had planned to present to us on this topic?
We have not.
Okay. Maybe just to revisit, plan for Monday, and kind of back to where we are. Maybe just to revisit plan for Monday and kind of back to where we are on the current proposed levy. Any kind of questions of council or additional feedback points, things you'd like to see between now and Monday that maybe haven't already been provided?
What we will do is we will give you a full budget that has the funds in them. It shows the general fund and all the funds we've had presented in one pack. We will present you, obviously, with a new tax rate and new levy chart and tell you if there's any differences, any changes, which I've already said, there's a little bit of one here, but by Monday, there probably will not be. But if you have additional needs or questions on the general fund, any of the capital funds, any of the funds, water, sewer, the only thing you're supposed to do on Monday is the levy.
Right.
We can still change the levy before December, only down, not up. And we can have discussions on all the other funds. It's just what we're going to do. And if you have questions or concerns, we need to know them as soon as we possibly can.
Well, I guess, you know, I would like to continue to digest here. And then, you know, if I, I, I'm just not anticipating an issue at this point in time. Our great need to have another meeting, but I know that the option is there if, you know, we, I feel a need, like, you know, we need to come back to the table and have some conversation around.
Perfect.
Just for that.
Perfect. Technically, that could even be just a working session, but for Monday's council meeting as well, so.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything further planned for this evening?
No, I would like to thank the council. I know this is a lot of information, the last meeting, and this is a lot of information. But this is what we've been trying to get to for a while. Hopefully, we're giving you a good, like you said earlier, a roadmap to what the future looks like. Obviously, you know, there may be construction on the way to the roadmap, but at least it's, we know where the destination should be. So I appreciate your attention and I know that it's a lot to take under consideration and something new to this organization that we're doing a 10-year plan, so.
Well, thank you and for all of the work in getting us to this point. I know it's been over many meetings and lots of detail giving us to this point. One maybe request as we're heading into the, kind of the fourth quarter planning season. It would be helpful, because so many of these projects are specific to roads. It would be helpful, Ryan, just to ha, do a, kind of a, a review for council of what is planned for 2023 street projects. And then perhaps just specific to streets related to the 10-year plan, just, we've seen at a high level, but it's always been in context with everything else, and it's particular to streets, because we do get questions on, hey, what's the plan for Forest Road or North Shore Trail? Be good to just circle back to revisit timeline for those. And what's known, what's not known. I know there's always a lot of changing variables, but be good to just kind of, as we're going into the final budget approval, just have that crystal clear for everybody. All right, anything further?
No, just thank you for all the work.
Yeah. Very good. All right, that is the end of our planned agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
All second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.